I'd like to follow the April 11th regular meeting of the school committee. Would you like to walk in please? Superintendent?
Mr. Veronica?
Present.
Mr. Bargoli? Mr. DiMietti?
Present.
Mr. Gattro?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mayor Coe?
Present.
And North Carolina State Representative Malloy?
Present.
Would you like to all to join me and sit in the corner please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a moment for the approving of the events. Motion, motion, and set of course. All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to move on to open forum. Open forum is an opportunity that the community and Quinsey Public Schools, after giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation with no more than four minutes to the school floor. An individual may not exchange their time on the next lines. Is there anyone for open forum?
Hello, my name is Diana McDonald. I live at 11 Farrell Street in Quincy. I just wanted to introduce myself as the president of the Quincy Coral Booster. Dr. Christopher Farrow has been nice enough to give us some time and we can talk a little bit about what we can do to enhance the culture and enhance the vocal programs in the city, throughout the city from K through 12, and also just to help expand coral awareness for the city. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent for his report.
Good, thank you very much. And I will have Mr. Sagal come up.
Thank you, Superintendent Christopher Farrow. Good evening, Mayor Coe, Vice Chair Revo, and members of the school committee. This evening, we are honored to once again recognize our talented high school students for their exceptional accomplishments. Our student recognition includes Quincy High School's Skills USA Medalist, as well as our 2018 Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year. During this evening, our representatives of Quincy High School, including Principal Dr. Tagleary, Career and Technical Education Department Chair Rebecca McInnes, Business Technology instructors Cynthia Martin and Michael McNeese, and QPS IT Coordinator and Skills USA Advisor Edward Holmes. Mr. Holmes will begin our Skills USA Medalist presentation.
Hello. This evening, we are celebrating our Skills USA Medalists. Skills USA is a national career and technical organization where students compete at the district, state, and national level. These competitions include skills competitions, which are in all of the career and technical education areas, as well as chapter business procedure, extemporaneous speaking, job interview, prepared speech, and then queue. The students we are honoring tonight competed and medaled at the district competition that was held on February 28. The gold and silver medalists from these events will continue to the state competition on April 26 through 28. Quincy is sending 13 students to the state competition. And students receiving gold medal at the state level will have the opportunity to compete at the national level in Louisville, Kentucky in June. This year's Quincy High School students competed in eight areas at the district level: 3D visualization and animation, computer programming, customer service, first aid and CPR, IT service, internet working, nurse assisting, excuse me, nurse assisting, and technical computer applications. And I just want to wish congratulations to the 2018 district competition medal winners and announce them by their contest. With 3D visualization and animation, winning the gold medal is a two-person team, Ben Parrish and Nora Pat Ergestiget. By the way, this is the third year in a row that they have won the gold medal. Information technology service, Donald Hurl, won the silver medal. Computer programming, Ethan Brany, won the silver medal, and he was unable to be here tonight. Internet working, Kevin Mortimer, the silver medal. And then, for technical computer applications, we had a clean sweep. So, Chase Reardon won the bronze medal. Penton Quack, the silver medal. And last, but certainly not least, Elise DuCharme, the gold medal.
The Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year award recognizes those students whose scholastic and vocational technical achievements have significantly contributed to our school system. The selection criteria includes a 3.5 grade average, technical competence, excellence attendance, leadership qualities, vocational-related work experience, extracurricular activities, and community involvement. Career and tech ed teachers nominated students deserving of this award and forwarded their names to Quincy's selection team. After reviewing qualifications, the field was narrowed to eight deserving candidates. Those eight candidates were then interviewed by members of the Quincy School Community Partnership, including Stephen Westling of Westling Architects, Phil Gay of the Southshore YMCA, Lauren Padretti of Quincy Credit Union, Diana Rose, Boston Scientific, Larry Lizo, Constituent Services at City Hall, Lynn Courtney, Southshore Workforce Development Board, Sandra Muggenigo, Community Healthcare, and Ross Jarvis, General Dynamics, Bluefin Robotics. Interview committee members asked candidates about their career major, skills learned, contributions made to Quincy High School and/or the community, as well as post-graduation plans. Student candidates had the opportunity to demonstrate their technical competence by articulating a project in their respective program manager, major. Each candidate did an exceptional job making the selection process very, very difficult. And tonight, we have the distinct honor of introducing you to Quincy's 2018 Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year, Victoria Chen. And Mr. Tagleary will share Victoria's path to being selected for this award.
Thank you, Mr. Guinness. Truly a privilege to present Victoria to you. I've had the distinct pleasure to be Victoria's principal for six out of the past seven years, and I'm not surprised at all by her accomplishments. Victoria is the daughter of May and Steve Chen, and she has excelled with the Business Technology Program at Quincy High School. Victoria has many high school accomplishments, including her amazing academic achievement. She is currently ranked sixth in her class with a GPA of 4.62. She is also, obviously, the top business technology student in her class. Victoria is a member of the Quincy High School National Honor Society, the Business National Honor Society, and the Science National Honor Society for our leadership's glow and show with her strong participation within the Quincy High School community. She is a member of our student council, the interact club, and the crew team. The list of accolades she has received is long and well-deserved. Various awards and honors include the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Daughter of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award, and the Davis Rankin History Prize Book Award. Victoria was also nominated for and participated in Careers in Accounting and Management Profession Summer Academy, sponsored by the Massachusetts CPA Association at the Eisenberg School at the University of Massachusetts Amherst. She spent a significant amount of her time out of school volunteering in the community. She was helped at the Germantown Neighborhood Center in teaching children piano skills and helping set up the Germantown Neighborhood Center's teen night. She was a live Blue Ambassador for the New England Aquarium, helping to restore and clean up natural habitats. Victoria speaks Cantonese fluently and is currently studying Mandarin. Victoria plans to further her education and pursue a degree in accounting. As you can see, Victoria has invested herself in her education and has certainly made her parents and all of us at Quincy High School proud. Victoria will join her fellow peers throughout the state at the 32nd Annual Outstanding Vocational Technical Student Awards banquet tomorrow night at the campus hall in Augusta. Members of the school committee, it is my pleasure to present to you Victoria Chen.
So hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Chen, and Mr. Tag just listed off a bunch of things about me, but um...
There's more.
But don't make a wrong meeting. So hello, I'm currently a senior at Quincy High School as a business technology three major. So prior to rolling in business classes at Quincy High School, I didn't really know much about business, but some of the very first business classes that I took were freshman seminar, computer applications, and Microsoft Office. And now I can say that I have much greater appreciation and understanding of business. I've learned various aspects in business and the numerous careers, including accounting, finance, management, marketing, as well as entrepreneurship. Through my research plan, which I have brought tonight, I've designed and developed my own job loss in business. So if you're looking through the binder, which I see is being passed around, I have different sections which include the executive summary, the market evaluation, and the operations of the business, and also feel free to like look through the other parts as well. In business, I've obtained many Microsoft Office skills in Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Access, and I'm able to use these skills to help me in projects in my other classes. I've learned to become a more competent speaker as well. Ms. Martin is consistently asking us to get up and present current events or projects in front of our peers. We also complete research papers that we do in class, which are a great practice for assignments in preparation for college. Through the Business Technology Program, I've become Career Safe OPA certified, and I've participated in an internship that's provided me with real-life work experience. Every Thursday and Friday, I walk over to the election office in City Hall, and I work with Amanda and Vincent there to do like census stuff or like election papers, and it's a really unique and rewarding experience to be able to continue learning beyond the classroom. The Quincy High School Business Technology Program has helped me determine that business is a field that I want to continue to pursue in college. I'm planning on majoring in accounting, and I will be attending Babson College in the fall, where I have been awarded a full tuition scholarship. So I'm really grateful to Ms. Martin and Mr. McNeese, two instructors in the Business Technology Program, for helping me discover business and find a future career, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and congratulations to everyone. If I could have the parents of these fine students standing and be recognized, that would be a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be proud. At this time, I would like to have Officer Sada come up on Saturday. Does a fine job with our DARE program, and I understand you're losing a partner?
Yeah, I lost him already that week.
John Graziosi. So, I don't know if you want to come up now, John, or you want to wait until whatever time. What do you think? Come on up there so we can...
Well, it's up to you. I have a few words to say.
Oh, come on, John. Come on, John. You're still in decent shape, I think.
He knows I'm not going to agree with words, but I'll try to be my best. Dr. Deas, we have to say a few words tonight, so I'd love to do that. I've had the pleasure of working with John for almost 20 years, and my participation in DARE and the schools, and my work as a DARE officer in the elementary schools, and John's done both elementary and middle schools, and worked with high school students as well. And John's had 32 years at the police department, which I think has been a great career for him. He just retired about a week or so ago, if he can, I'm not sure if he remembers that, but there was a lot going on that week. But I just want to say I appreciate so much working with him, his diligence to his job, having the school system. I'm sure you guys have heard things, I've heard a lot of things when I've been working with families and students and teachers and principals. John's been a great asset to the school department. At the time, he's kind of been alone from the police department in his hours he was in the schools. And so I appreciate the chance to work with him. I deeply respect his diligence to his job and the police department, and I deeply respect the integrity he's carried the whole time he's been at the police department for the school. So with that, I want to welcome or wish him well in his years of retirement, and knowing that we both think very fondly of you and remember the work you've done with the police department as well as with the schools for years to come. So thank you.
Twenty bucks, twenty pence. Last day at the police department, I didn't write it down, and it kind of was like a blow burning in it. Mayor Coe, Dr. Christopher Farrow, members of the school committee, thank you for organizing my work as one of Quincy's DARE offices. It's no coincidence that one of my favorite movies of all time is To Serve With Love. Kind of aging myself there. Some of these kids probably don't even know that movie yet. In this movie, a teacher is put in with a tough group of kids in England. He believes in them and what much patience and care he's able to educate them and have them realize that education is important. I also believe that education is important. In my 22-plus years in DARE, I tried to have my students realize that abusing substances is not the way to go. As a new DARE officer, I had a little bit of training in working with children. Luckily, I met some great staff at Quincy Public Schools, I see Dr. Francis Senior, this is kind of my first contact with the school department. They gave me guidance, advice, support, and working with the students. This continued right up to the last day that I taught this year. My hope was that I was able to help some people over the years, in one way or another. Thank you again.
Introduce yourself.
My wife, Winona Graziosi, and... My son, John Graziosi. Jack Graziosi. Riley Graziosi. Thank you again.
I just want to say that I'm cheering for you to John as previously a ward counselor and a father of whose kids went through Beachville School as well as Central Middle School. I feel like I've come to know both you and Don in a special way, as a parent of kids going through the system. I venture to guess that probably not a school, middle or elementary school in the city where folks don't know you, where students don't know you. I told my son, "You probably know my kids." I know you might know my kids, but I asked my youngest, and he said simply, "He's a great guy." And so they know you, you know both my kids, and I suspect somehow you guys inspired them to participate in SAD, and you helped them make good choices, like you do for every student in elementary school and middle school. And I just want to say thank you for all that you've done as a DARE officer and throughout your career at the Quincy Police Department. It's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, John. You know, we really are going to miss you. I think Don will miss you even more, but our kids will miss you, our principals, assistant principals, and our teachers that really came to respect everything about you, always professional, always. And I think you got to a point where not only our students, which you know are the most special, but also our colleagues trusted you, you know, because you were a good listener. If they had issues with certain families, certain students, you were always there just to listen and to give guidance and give advice. And so you really are to serve with love in so many ways, and I appreciate you saying that. I do remember the movie.
Probably didn't mean you.
But you're always someone that everyone trusted, and you should be really proud of that. You had a great heart, and it's who you are that's made such a great difference to so many of our kids. So I want to thank you very much for being here and to be recognized and everything you have done, the time you've given to our Quincy Public Schools. So I want to thank you very much. And we want to take a picture, of course, so we get active here, you know, and make sure your family comes up, your whole family comes up and be part of the picture. So I don't know if you're all set.
At this time, I would like to take a brief recess so our students can get back to open room.
Did you wait, were you waiting right there?
I was in the other room. That's why I said I couldn't back up, because there's no parking spot, so I ended up back there and dropped you off. I'm back in Quincy High in the back.
You're the girl who just talked to the obvious student of the year and got a full answer.
I know.
Thank you very much. Wanted to make sure we congratulated John Kelly, who was part of Student Government Day at the State House and was actually governing for the day and giving a good speech. He was a Quincy High School senior, and we want to congratulate him on his honor, as well as his teacher, Matt McMillan, and really for him, some of the great things we've done. So I want to congratulate John. The revised school calendar is at your places, with June 25th being the last day for students and June 26th, last day for our professional staff. Just wanted to mention that the MSBA toured Central Middle School, and five or six of MSBA staff came down, including Mary Ficetti, Director of Capital Planning. It's something new they're doing, they're revisiting or visiting schools that they have partnered with cities and towns. So they were there, and they were pretty thrilled with the maintenance at Central after the years, the instructional equipment as well, the custodial, everything. So they were very, very pleased with everything that they saw at the Central Middle School. High School Robotics, they finished another long weekend, but going back to March 24th, 26th, they went to Fairfield, Connecticut, did very, very well. They're praised for their teamwork and for their design and for their organizational plan. April 6th through 8th, the team was at Revere High School for a Greater Boston District event as well, were ranked 19th out of 41 teams, and were given a creativity award.
The team now looks forward to mentoring as well as working with our elementary and middle school robotics event that we have on May 19th. And that's always a wonderful event, the Robotics Challenge. And that's sponsored by QEA. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. And May 21st, seniors on the robotics team are recognized for their future plans and continuing educational decisions. So some of our seniors of the robotics team are going to Northeastern University, Boston University, Worcester Polytech Institute, UMass, Rockworth Institute of Technology, Purdue University, Rice University, Colorado School of Mines, MIT, Emory University, Rensselaer Polytech Institute, Penn State, and Dublin Institute of Technology. So a lot of success from the robotics team and a lot of really wonderful students. I want to thank the staff, Mike Gendron, the facilitator of the team, Don Wong, a longtime Don Wong servicing and helping our kids, science teacher at Quincy High, Kim Pierce, math teacher at Quincy High, also on the team called Tally Engineering at Quincy High School. Lynn Byron is a North Quincy High School facilitator. So I want to thank them for their service to our kids and the knowledge that they lend to our kids so valuable. Budget meetings, we'll be talking individually within the next couple of weeks about our budget and working with the mayor and see, review our process with all of you, review our process, talk about assessment needs of the school system and see where we head for next year. The Quincy School Community Partnership events, thank you for attending the breakfast. That was another great, great success. And building on that, we have the annual Credit for Life Fair. That's on, that's April 26th. That was rescheduled. And that's for our seniors at North Quincy High School and Quincy High School. That's at the Terral Room, 10 to 12:30 again on the 26th. The Elementary and Middle Schools Robotics Challenge, which I just mentioned, Saturday, May 19th, Quincy High School Gymnasium from 9:00 to 1:00. And that all is just, there's so many parents that are rooting for their children as well. It's a pretty spectacular morning. Community Service Learning Celebration, May 30th, 9:00 to 10:30 at the Terral Room. I want to thank Blue Cross and Bushido for sponsoring that event. Events in June, Student Athletic Summit, Grade Five Student Council Leadership Summit. Also, that's rescheduled as well. That'll be June 4th. June 7th is the Staff Retirement Luncheon. June 13th is Flag Day. At one or two of the schools will have a Flag Day event sponsored by Mayage, as they've done for so many years. The safety, student, student safety presentations that we're offering, as you know, we were here on March 7th with you. And then we went to Citywide Parents on Monday evening. And that was very, very well-attended by so many parents. We'll also, on April 23rd, we'll be going to the Quincy City Council. And on the 25th, we'll be presenting to the Quincy Education Association Representative Council as well. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with a small group of QEA members to begin talking about a safety team. If they have concerns, that we can meet somewhat continuously and consistently to make sure that teachers feel comfortable with where we're going, where we're headed, with so many of our protocols that Mr. Drakeo takes care of. Our high school concerts, both the April 5th and April 10th were outstanding. We have the choral on Tuesday at Quincy High School, Tuesday, May 1st. And again, you know, I want to thank Diane here and Dan for the work that you're doing. And thank you very, very much, as well as our band, Boosters, as well. Really working so hard with our kids and our teachers. So we appreciate everything that you do. Nobel Laureate, we're continuing that initiative. This will be our sixth laureate coming in to visit with our North Quincy High School and Quincy High School students. You have that program in front of you with Dr. Richard Roberts, who's coming on May 1st to both, it'll be at Adams Hall. And we have North Quincy High School students and Quincy High School students there to speak with. And, you know, every time we have that laureate program, we have evaluations after and our students give us some incredible advice on the next laureate, what they're looking for, what their interests are. Parent Academies, Monday and Tuesday, 9 and 10, April 9 and 10. And this week, both at Lincoln Hancock. And we thank so many teachers that are there, as well as our leadership team that do such a fine job. April 26th, Healthy Choices Family Night. That's at Central Middle School. It's sponsored by Rita Bailey and Mark Peel. And it's for Zed, our health teachers, our nurses, all combined to have a great parent event, as well as for hundreds of our kids that show up and go to the stadium and do a lot of team events. So it's a really great night that we can continue that. As well as, we have more Parent Academies, May 10th. Talks about our partnership with the Turner Spring Library and all the things that are there and offer this spring. May 22nd is the Welcome to Kindergarten. We've had that for, this will be our third year, outstanding success. May 30th is Girl Rising. And that's for grade eight students and parents. And that'll be from 3:00 to 5:00. But a lot of opportunity for community, but more opportunity for our students to participate in some really great events. Lincoln Hancock had a busy day on Saturday. They had Touch a Truck in the morning. And then in the afternoon, we had our middle school swim meet, where about 160 middle school students competed. And had a lot of fun. And I think it was competitive, but it was more social if you watched the whole thing. So many parents there as well. So I want to thank the middle school principals, assistant principals, athletic director Kevin Mahoney for everything that they do to make that event a success. Elementary Course Camp will be held this April break for grades three to five. So we look forward to as many students as want to be there at Quincy High School. And I don't know what the number is now, but Dr. Halli is handling that. And I think that's going to be another success as we did last year. Ms. Laurie, you want to talk about Picnic in the Park?
Sure. Okay. On Saturday, April 23rd, Annual Picnic in the Park is going to be held at the Adams Historic Site. So it's a collaboration of the Planning Department of Quincy Public Schools and the National Park Service. So it's a free picnic for families. The event's sort of aimed at elementary school families. We get a lot of young families there as well. We've had as many as 500 families visit for lunch and scavengement and activities. It's going to be some new items this year. It's going to be painting. The Quincy Art Association is going to be coming and doing more color painting with the students as well. So it'll be for a nice sunny day for the event.
Very good. Thank you. And the Francis Parker, Francis W. Parker School 100th Anniversary is well within the planning stage. And that was back in 1916. The school committee described the Francis Parker as who was the first superintendent in the Quincy Public Schools in 1875. No, I wasn't there. So Parker was Quincy's first superintendent. And he was described by John Quincy Adams II, quoted saying that superintendent, "He transformed our public schools and finding them as machines and leaving them as ointments." He breathed life, growth, and happiness into our schools at Parker. So I want to congratulate the Colonel, as well as hope to see with the 100th Anniversary on May 12th from 10 to 1. Principal Margaret McNeil is working very, very hard with her staff to have a great show that day. Athletic newsletters and Safety First also in your packets at your places. And with that, thank you very much.
Mr. Dr.
Through you to Superintendent, just one question on the report. It's the MSBA. Can you explain the post-occupancy visit? And I'll tell you what the ask is. Is it some kind of an audit? Do they grade us? Can it impact future applications? Or are they just coming to see a nice school or, you know? So I assume there's some kind of financial analysis afterwards to make sure we properly spent the money. But the nature of this, is this unique? It says, it says a pilot, post-occupancy pilot. So did they do it at Quincy High?
We may have been one of the first. To visit. They did not do it at Quincy High School. So they came to Central and they asked a lot of questions of our public buildings, mostly our public buildings slash maintenance. To make sure that we're keeping up with their investment as well as ours. So I think that was probably what the purpose was. And then they took a tour of the school. And they came back and asked more questions of the principal as far as the instructional equipment, you know, the technology mostly. And then talked more to Paul Hines, who was there representing the city as far as public buildings. And asked them about the heating, the air, just a lot of the maintenance items that they want to make sure that their investment is covered.
Do they prescribe or require any maintenance or just?
No. I think they go back and they talk about when they visit the schools, they have discussions on kind of where they go from, you know, kind of lessons learned type of thing. So I think that's really what the purpose was.
So it doesn't feed future applications in any way? They don't ask school districts or cities, you know, "We want to build in X, Y, Z around maintenance."
They could do that. They could do that, sure, yeah. And I think that's, again, part of the purpose.
Just thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. But it is a pilot, so we may have been the first or one of the first.
Very good. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Under old business, we have a proposed policy change to the school committee policy. I should probably read this. This item is going to be sitting on the table until the next meeting on May 2nd, but we'll take a vote on it. But the proposal is, the current language says, remember what I said when we opened the meeting, that open forums are an opportunity for community input regarding Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yet to others. The proposed changes to that language will say, "Open forum, an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools." Community, in this context, defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forums may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yet to others. That will be discussed over the next two weeks and up for vote at the next meeting. Next item. And in my business, Dr. Christopher.
Thank you. The item A, the New Middle School Junior Building Committee. I don't know if there's another Junior Building Committee. I really have no mistake. But I have to tell you, there's no finer students than we have right here. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Mitchell, Assistant Principal of Sterling Middle School, as well as recognize Dr. John Francis Senior, Principal of Sterling Middle School.
Good evening. Mayor, Dr. Chris Sparrow, members of the school committee. It's been my pleasure over the past five months to work with our Junior Building Committee. This group is comprised of 16 dedicated students that work extremely hard on each task, project, and opportunity that comes their way. And they take being a member of this committee very seriously. Some of their accomplishments so far this year include building a JBC website, writing newsletters, touring the current Sterling Middle School and documenting the status in Google Classroom. Two of these students have presented at the topping-off ceremony, while two different students presented to our Sterling PTO. In the spring, the JBC will be describing the new school to their fellow classmates, as well as students at Lincoln Hancock, by using a PowerPoint and video similar to the ones we have for you tonight. The students that you'll be hearing from are Athena Perry, John Tran, Mia Heim, Mary Ballatin, Kayla Tran, and Ahmad Alkabi. And he is one of our website designers and technicians. To begin our presentation and tour of the new Sterling Middle School, I'd like to introduce Athena Perry.
Good evening. It's been a busy five months for Sterling's Junior Building Committee from its inception in November. We've gained four members, lost a few. We've had the privilege of meeting with and learning from city officials and grown into leaders in our last year at Sterling Middle School. We welcome these Sterling students when the ribbon is cut and doors open on the state-of-the-art new building. But this is our way to contribute to the success of future students in the new building. While some of us have our siblings' future school experience in mind, others are engaged in the process because we see schools as the pinnacle of a community's forward mobility. In our roles as Junior Building Committee members, the JBC, we've been handed a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to learn, lead, and connect with our community. From the beginning, we've enjoyed a behind-the-scenes view of what it takes to make a building, from designs to blueprints to bricks and mortar. As ambassadors, we delight in spreading the vision of the new building. For a glimpse of what's to come, take a look. Take a look at this short video provided by AI3 and architect Scott Dunlop. As JBC members, we've also been given the unique opportunity to forge deeper connection to Sterling, learning about its history as we verge the past to the future. Research activities include a tour of the massive and seemingly indestructible Boiler Room, documenting historical artifacts within the current building, and poring over photographs and yearbooks from the 1930s to the 2000s. We occasionally present our learnings and updates to the community. We presented to the Sterling PTO in January. We will soon publish newsletter, a newsletter and website to educate parents and members of the community. And in the future, we will be visiting the Lincoln Hancock fourth-grade students to share and educate them on the building process. We also participated in Bond Construction's topping-off ceremony in early December. Here's an excerpt.
What a great day, a great day for the city of Quincy, a great day for the residents and neighborhoods and students of the southwest part of our city. The city's going through quite a transformation. And my colleagues have joined me in investing in a lot of infrastructure citywide. But there's nothing more visible infrastructure than when you see a new building well. This is a real commitment, an outward commitment, a clear sign of our commitment to education in Quincy.
A great deal of time and effort have been given by the Sterling administrators and staff members in being part of the creation of what will soon be the newest school in the city of Quincy. Even though many of my fellow students will not be able to attend the beautiful new school when it opens, it is amazing that we, the proud students led by the Junior Building Committee, are taking an active role in the planning phases of the construction project. In just two months, we have seen towers of concrete and steel beams rise up from what was just once simply a big hole in the ground. We actually can now see the outline to what will be the new gymnasium and many of the new classrooms.
Whether Scandinavian or Native American in origin, topping a beam with a tree has become an important custom in the construction industry. Today, it symbolizes a blessing for the new building and its future inhabitants, a safe job well done and hope that the new building will be everlasting. I like to think that it even showcases the power and the skill of the construction workers, not only to build this amazing new building, but to casually lift a tree to the top of it. Americans have added on to this tradition, placing an American flag on one end of the beam, symbolizing love of country and the American dream. Today, as we commemorate this special milestone, let's take the opportunity to announce our pride, not only in the accomplishments and progress made so far, but in teamwork displayed by all. Our mayor, the Massachusetts-
by all, our mayor, the Massachusetts Building Authority, Quincy City Council, Quincy School Committee, our project manager, architects, construction crew, building committee, and Sterling School community. A great deal of labor may lie ahead, but thanks to our team effort, we have a clear vision and a sound footing.
Say, I was so impressed by Mia and Athena. They were so polished, so poised, and I'm looking at this group. And I kind of, I kind of hope that they're not, they don't become politicians. What I really want them to do is become engineers, okay? You know, I love the fact that the majority of this junior building committee is made up of females, so, you know, there's a dearth of females in the trade, the building and trade, so, you know, if you like engineering, stick with it and you'll do great things. Dan Valentine, who was a reporter for the Salt Lake City Tribune, once described a school as a building of four walls with tomorrow inside, and we at the MSBA are so proud to be part of the tomorrow for Quincy. Thank you very much.
The construction process has been amazing, and since the topping off ceremony, the construction crew has made tremendous progress. It's obvious today, when you stop by the site, you can see the new building. You can spot the gymnasium, the auditorium, and the entrances. Next, we have a group of building plan slides that will display the present Sterling and the future Sterling. A few of my JBC colleagues will walk through the slides in detail and make the building come alive. Next up, my friend Don Tran.
Good evening. My name is Don Tran, and I am on the Junior Building Committee at Sterling Middle School. In just a couple of years, we'll have students walking into a brand-new school through the Granite Street doors. From Granite Street, from Granite Street, students of grades fifth through eighth are welcomed. When you look at the building from Granite Street to the left, the fifth grade is allowed in, and to the right, students from all other grades are allowed in. If you walk in the school through the upper classroom's door, then just to your left will be the office. The office includes guidance and administration, as well as the nurse's office. If you continue down the hallway, you'll find the student dining area, and beyond that is the kitchen. Also, on floor one, you can find the fifth and sixth grades' classrooms, STEM labs, and special education rooms. If you head back towards the entrance that we came in, you'll find the stairway to take you back downstairs. From there, Mia Heim, my fellow JBC member, will show you around the lower level in which faculty will enter on Robert Street.
Good evening, school committee members of Quincy Public Schools. I'm Mia Heim and also part of the Junior Building Committee. Say you are a student walking into the front doors of the new middle school. You would enter through the main level, then walk down a staircase to the lower level. This level includes classrooms like the music room, health room, and band room. Or if your teacher is making you take out the recycling, then you would go down to this level for that, too. Right next to the recycling room is also the custodial room, mechanical room, electrical room, and the room where food and school supplies are delivered to. Or if you have gym class, then you would go down to this level and find the gymnasium along with locker rooms for both genders. In the center of it all is the auditorium, which will be able to seat 280 people. The setup of this level is like no other school out there. It is truly unique. Next is Mira Ballatin introducing the upper level. Thank you.
My name is Mira Ballatin, and I am a member of the JBC. Transitioning from the lowest level to the top, we started the library. The library in the new school has new and more updated computers along with more room for books. In the new school, we will have a video production studio, which will have a green screen that will be used for after-school activities and other aspects of school. The art room will have kilns and more storage. The language and computer lab has more up-to-date computers. There will be a seventh and eighth grade wing, as well as their own respective STEM labs. The STEM labs are something we do not have in school currently and will accommodate about 48 students at a time. A smart board is lined along the wall with two whiteboards next to it. The whiteboards will slide and have adjustable storage behind them. The greenhouses will have more room for blends. Next, we have one of my fellow JBC members and my fellow peer, Kayla Chan.
Good evening. My name is Kayla Chan, and I am a member of the Junior Building Committee. Being part of the JBC has been an amazing experience so far. I love how we can take an active role in the process of the new school. Sterling today has brought us many memories that we will always remember, but I'm sure the new school will give long-lasting memories to other students as well. I trust that the new school will offer future students the opportunities to learn, live, and give them the privilege to experience the updated technology and architecture. Although I won't be able to learn in the new school because I'm moving on to high school, I'm happy to say that high school requires community service, and I hope I can return to help. Lastly, I would like to thank Dr. De Cristofaro, Mr. Smith, Mayor Koch, Dr. Fran, Ms. Mitchell, Bond Brothers, AI3, PC360, and all of the other school committee members. Thank you.
Any comments? I have a few I'd like to add. This is just an incredible opportunity, and it's so much realer to me when I hear it from you guys. It really is, and it's just so exciting. What I really like about it, and I love Central Middle School, it's beautiful, I love that this one's different. It's so, it's so unique and so beautiful, and I just want to thank the architects for that because sometimes when you get new construction, it's sort of a copy of the new construction. So I really, really appreciate that there's so much uniqueness in this design, and thank you for your contribution. We couldn't have done it without you.
It just looks fantastic.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I thank you all. You know, we practiced here this afternoon, and obviously you didn't take any of my advice because it was spectacular. But I thought, you know, and Ahmad, I want to thank you. Let's hear it for Ahmad. Lucky, lucky student with all the young ladies. Good job, you know. But, you know, I really, I mean, watching it, I thought there was, and probably was, but I thought there was a rainbow above the new Sterling pictures, and I want to let you know that you're a part of that rainbow. You're the eighth graders, you know, you're our leaders, you do a spectacular job, you're going to go down to Lincoln Hancock and share with grade four, you talk about community service. We're just very, very proud of everything you do. And I want to thank Ms. Mitchell for a lot of the work, along with Dr. Fran as well, but you should be very, very proud. I don't know if your parents are in here or they're in the other room, you probably should have had them in here to thank them. Why don't we do that? Yeah, Mark, now, but just to little thank them for being so supportive as well. Probably embarrassed them too, but that's probably fun. And I think as we move along, this is going to be a hard fall, a very tough, tough fall. Apologize for that prior to this. But here, parents of the JBC, come on in, you know, we're recognized. Thank you for your support of great students, so we thank you very, very much. And with that, we'd like to take a picture, you know, with the school committee. Well, thank you all very much.
and constituents.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mr. Matt, Dr. De Cristofaro. I want to be very brief because we have tried to be the thorn between roses here. You heard from the A Team here, Junior Building Committee, a little bit lost perhaps in the message was a comment made by one of the young students that they're never going to be able to go to school here. But notwithstanding that fact, it was something that Mr. Kerwin from PCA360 talked about. Notwithstanding that fact, they've really embraced this from day one, and they've been wonderful. They're going to be part of the legacy of the school and its history because one of the big projects they've undertaken is they're doing the historical inventory of the current facility. They're reporting to us, they're taking pictures, and all of that's going to be submitted to Massa Store. So the old Sterling is going to continue to live on as a result of the efforts of these students. And that's something that shouldn't be lost in tonight's message. What I'm going to do is turn it over to our project manager so the committee can hear from and talk to the project professionals who have been doing a great job, as I think everyone's aware.
Good evening, Mayor and Superintendent of the School Committee. Thanks for having us in tonight. Well, that's a tremendous opportunity to be part of a meeting tonight. I mean, really incredible. We'll keep it kind of brief because you've had a lot already tonight, but, and I'm going to turn you over to our project manager, Brian, in just a minute to give you an update on what's been going on since we were in here last. But before we do that, I wanted to introduce the team. Scott Dunlap from AI3. Scott, I don't know if you have anything to say at all, or...
I'm smart enough to know not to speak after this. No, wait, no, wait.
And our contractor, our construction manager is Bond Brothers, and we have Vice President Ken Johnson from Bond. And then our project executive, Dave Capaldo, who's really running the job out there for us. Dave, anything to say? Say hello.
No, I'm going to take Scott's lead and... Obviously, it's been, it's been an honor, especially to work with the Junior Building Committee and the staff at the school. The dedication they have to help us get our job done makes a huge difference, so we're very appreciative of that.
We really have, just to say, an incredible collaborative team here with the school department, the local folks at the school, our junior building committee, I mean, everybody really is all working together on this, and I think the results show, and we're all ready for winter to be over, but we actually managed to get through the winter and made great progress. So with that, Brian, why don't you give our committee an update here on what we've been doing?
We put together a PowerPoint presentation that follows what we gave to you last time with some new pictures that are updated. So I don't know if they're going to put it up on the screen for us. Is that the building? There you go. Excellent. All right. So we'll just do a real brief scheduled timeline update. We won't get into too much of the detail because we've already had, like I said, quite a bit already. So we get a band set, Tom, we'll go to the next slide. One more click, Tom, just to show you where we are in the timeline of the project. We're at a critical point right now, working towards weather tight, which is a major milestone for us, and I'll be coming up pretty soon. But right now, we're in the process of putting the roof on and getting the exterior skin developed and put onto the building. So here is a view of the exterior when we were here last. If, Tom, go forward one, you'll see the transformation since we were here in mid-November, it's really taken shape pretty substantial. So let me show you what's happened in that timeframe. In November, they were still wrapping up some of the foundation work, and we were starting to get the, most of the backfill and construction concrete complete. And then in December, we had the topping off ceremony, the steelworkers began on the site, and that's, they were there for all of January through the really cold weather, and we had some snow as well, as you can see in the picture there. The structure's going up. And here, you can see some of the edges and the detail coming in. Picture in the bottom right is the roof. And then in February, they start with the interior, even though the steelwork's still going on, some of the smaller work. Now, the trades are beginning to work inside and put what will be the HVAC system in. And here in February, a lot of the concrete has gone in onto the floors that tops the steel structure, so you can see a lot of that there in the picture. And then in March, they're getting ready to put the floors that are going to go in the lowest level of the building and also add the Granite Street elevation. There's an area that's on grave. So anyways, that's sort of where we're at right now. Like I said, the roofing is going on, the building, the exterior framing's starting to infill all those bays. We're on schedule. We're really, we have a great team. Everybody that we're working with, we're all gelling quite well. It's been a great experience. And I wanted to mention two Quincy Public Buildings who we report directly to, has been outstanding, working with Paul Heinz and Walter McDonald, really great partners. So everyone, I think, has really worked hard to get us to this point, and I'm very appreciative of the city's involvement and the team's involvement, so thank you. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Mayor Koch?
I don't really have any questions. I just have a couple of comments. And I just want to send my gratitude to the building committee, Junior Building Committee, I know they've moved on, but the building committee and the team. You know, in my 11th year as mayor and been involved in a lot of projects, a number of buildings, but a lot of public projects, and there hasn't been one that's gone as smooth and seamless as this one. And this was one of the more challenging ones because you're building around, literally up against the other buildings. So I'm just so proud of the team and grateful for the extra effort, because I know there's some extra effort, the communication that goes on between the team and the school personnel, and I know the leadership in the school with the kids helps make that seamless as well. So just, just a big thank you. Looking forward to the ribbon cutting when we get here. Thanks so much.
I want to say thank you very, very much. Echo with the mayor has said the work that you're doing is very, very collaborative. You know, you're involving so many people, and I think that's what makes it work, but it's also your professionalism, so we're very, very lucky. Walter, I didn't see you, I'm sorry, but, you know, I think you're doing a great job more than Paul Heinz, and thank you, Brian, for mentioning that, but that is part of the team, so just very, very appreciative of everything that you're doing, and we'll continue to work, and we should open in probably a week or two. Not that we're not hurt, but thank you very, very much for being here tonight and the work that you're doing. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing. It's incredible to see the joy that everybody's bringing to this project, from the kids to the administration, to the mayor's office, and to you guys, and you're really enjoying it, which is wonderful also. So thank you again.
Thanks, James. James Timmons back there as well, your leadership. Mrs. Perry for being on the building committee as well, and your daughter being on the junior building. But great stuff, so thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda is the Kincaid Park Improvement Update, Mayor Koch, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought it's important to speak as body of today because this park project literally spans between two of our schools. Kincaid, as you know, is on Water Street, backs up to Robert Street. Long history in the southwest Quincy, could use for softball, for baseball, for soccer, basketball courts, and the like. So we took a good look at the Kincaid as we outlooked citywide at our facilities and made a decision that we're going to do a little, little bit more Kincaid, a little bit more of investment for that entire neighborhood. We thought it was timely with the new school, and of course, of course, with the loss, a little bit of the green space behind the school within the building, we can make up for that on Kincaid. So I'm going to be submitting in the coming weeks to the city council appropriation package that will fund the Kincaid project. It's certainly a lot more expensive than what was anticipated initially, but it will include a number of things. It'll be a straightaway track. Did lose the circle behind Sterling in spite of this project. It was not a state-of-the-art standard track, but if this new facility, Kincaid, will more than accommodate what we do for middle school track. So there'll be a straightaway for it, eight-lane straightaway. There'll be a running path throughout the park. There'll be a, a running path throughout the park. We are going to be eliminating baseball and softball at the facility. It will be a large turf area that will be full-size soccer or under eights, under fours, that way you want to break up the soccer into several fields. It will be lit. There'll be a splash pad. There'll be two and a half basketball courts, and another, number of other amenities and amenities, and the entrances will be, will be dressed up. In addition to Water Street and Robert Street, there's also an entrance on Gilden Street to the backside, so I think it's going to be a welcome, welcome addition that is a big investment for that part of our city, and there'll be more to follow to come with the council if I thought appropriate to update the School Committee. I certainly have any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Aronson?
My only question is the timeline for the project, would coincide with opening the middle school as well?
That is the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next item on the agenda is the Social Studies Frameworks, 2018 History and Social Studies Frameworks. Ms. Roych, present.
Well, I'm here with the team, and you should have seen our faces over in the room next door when the Junior Building Committee was presenting. We knew where the bar was set for us, and we were doing our very best to meet that. They were incredible. So, good evening. Tonight, members of the Curriculum and Assessment Management Team and teacher representatives from our school, from our Social Studies Team, will provide an overview of the revised History and Social Science Framework, which is currently in draft form and available for review on the Department of Education's website. Tonight's presentation will provide information in four areas: the department's timeline for review and implementation, the prior areas of the new document, how the proposed changes will impact our K-12 curriculum, and next steps for the districts to take in order to stay in line with the changes that are coming.
Good evening. I'm going to present our presenters. This evening, we have Rebecca Brooks, who is grade five general education teacher from Quinsey Public Schools. We have Danielle Fernandez, City History and Social Science Department Chair at North Quincy High School, myself, Director of High School Curriculum, English, Foreign Education and Academic Programs, Jo McRitchie, grade eight social studies teacher at Atlantic Middle School, Erin Perkins, Director of Special Education and Elementary Curriculum Programs and Initiatives, and Matt Leroy, Senior Director of Middle School Education Programs and So to start off, I'd like to give you an overview of the Department of Education's review process and current timeline. Phase one, which occurred during the summer of 2016, involved selecting educators for a review panel and collecting input from pre-K to 12 constituents and higher ed stakeholders. During phase two, which went from January to November in 2017, the panel focused on analyzing the old framework, looking at and deciding on possible models for revision of the 2003 framework, establishing a scope and sequence and topics related to the scope and sequence for each grade, and revising the content standards with a final draft presentation to the Board of Education. We are currently in phase three, and in phase three, the draft has been presented to the board. That was on November 28th. The standards were then opened for a public comment, which just closed last week. I hope all of you had an opportunity to submit your comments. And now, the final draft will be presented to the board tentatively on June 26th for a vote to adopt. Phase four will occur from July of 2018 through June of 2020 and will involve disseminating the standards across the state, and this is really where our districts roll up their sleeves and work on adjusting curriculum and implementing standard alignment to daily So as I mentioned before, the state is currently in phase three of the review timeline, which means that from January to June 2018, curriculum directors and department chairs will be doing numerous tasks, such as monitoring communications from the Department of Education, sharing updates and encouraging social studies teams to review the draft document of the standards, participating in administrator video conferences and conference calls, and directing stakeholders to essential information such as curriculum memos, updates from board meetings, links to resources, and the results from the public comment period. In May, the board will hear final recommendations, and in June, the frameworks will be brought up for a vote. Other phases to come, as I had mentioned also about where we were with this, Quincy will be sharing the new standards with the district's social studies teachers, planning and adjusting curriculum for implementation of the new standards, and possibly development of a state history and social science assessment. The state also has two key priority areas, the first being a substantial instructional shift. There is definitely a large focus now on civics education, reflecting the input from the Board of Education, legislature, and the review panel. And there will be a new full-year course for grade eight. The civic standards will be also woven into every grade. The U.S. Government and Policies course at grade 12, politics, excuse me, at grade 12, which Quincy offers as an elective, has also gone through a revision, and in the revised course, students will be revisiting the founding documents with an increased emphasis on understanding their relevance and the impact on policies and politics of the present day. The proposed frameworks also emphasize supporting sections for teachers and students, such as a renewed mission, education in civic life and the democracy, guiding principles such as legacy of democratic government, diverse perspective on civic and historical events, studying current events, data analysis, and skills relating to media literacy. Standards for History and Social Science Practice for pre-K through 12, and Maddy will be talking a little more about these. And then finally, appendices, which will include primary sources and other resources for teachers at all levels to develop units that consistently connect to civics and government. So I'm going to turn this over to Maddy.
So the framework from 2003, which are the standards that we're currently working with, they actually were reviewed and considered of high quality and rigor, which is what we want in our, in our frameworks. But it was, it's over a decade old, so the department says it's time to make a shift and update the frameworks. With the review panel that they put together, there was clear consensus that civics education needed to be expanded and to move away from history as a sequence of dates and events, and instead write the new standards so that students could really deepen their understandings and make connections to the current, to their current political and social climate. To quote the department, "This revision seeks to deepen student understanding by avoiding the misconception that history and social science is merely about names, dates, and events." The History/Social Science Review Panel used key takeaways from our recently updated frameworks in ELA Math and Science. So there's this, this draft. Continues the focus on increasing or maintaining the rigor. The wording of the standards is clearer, so teachers have a better understanding of the explicit concept or skill that needs to be taught. There's better coherence among topics throughout the grades so that we can strengthen our own district K-12 alignment. As the standards are improved to address rigor, clarity, and coherence built into the frameworks are key features for the educators, and they're always looking for more guidance and information on how, on how to address the standards, not necessarily the lessons that they can develop on their own, but a guidance and of the interpretation of the standards. So there's a looking back and looking ahead section, which connects the concepts to what children have learned in their prior, in their earlier grades, as well as teaching points for things that students will visit in future courses. There are clarification statements to provide additional information for teachers when planning their units, and instructional examples and references to primary sources at each grade level to clarify challenging expectations. New is the Standards for History and Social Science Practice pre-K to 12. These seven practices are designed to correlate with the work of political scientists, economists, geographers, historians, and ordinary citizens. The practice standards encompass elements of the research process, analysis of the media, and push students to evaluate the credibility of sources. Also in the framework are sample guiding and supportive questions to support conceptual learning and inquiry, and the Standards for Literacy in History and Social Science already exist in our current English Language Arts framework. So to give you an example, here's an example of how the three sets of standards that I just referred to that are, that will be in the draft framework, how they could be integrated by a Quincy teacher. On the far left, that column is the content standards. So let's say a fifth-grade teacher is preparing her fall unit on Native Americans. The content standard explicitly focuses on the relationship between the native people and the English settlers, but it goes further than that. It talks about the learning expectations that students should be able to understand and express and communicate the differing views of land ownership and the idea of property rights. Obvious conflicts arose, and students are expected to understand and be able to explain both points of view. In the middle column are the practice standards. The practice standards are integrated so that the teacher designs his or her lesson around research, the gathering and citing of valid evidence, and the student's ability to evaluate credible sources. We do this as early as the elementary grades. The literacy standards, which are on the far right, these are standards that our English Language Arts teachers, as well as other content area teachers, are currently using. The literacy standards offers the teacher an opportunity to pull from a number of anchor standards: reading, writing, speaking and listening, language. And as an example, this teacher could pull a reading standard and expect students to research and cite evidence from multiple sources. And as a way to engage the class, the teacher can ask students to present their arguments in small groups and seek ideas or clarification to build upon their own ideas before presenting, and then they can express their final thoughts in writing, or even better, in a class forum in order to meet a speaking and listening standard. Up next is Danielle Fernandez, who will share her insight into the proposed changes for the High School Social Studies Department. After Danielle, we have Jo McRitchie, Rebecca Brooks, and Erin Perkins to outline the proposed changes for middle school, upper elementary, and the primary grades.
I think you did, but Kevin Bell is here as well.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
Quincy High School. I can just barely see Kevin.
So on the left hand of the slide is the recommendations from DZ, which are currently really in alignment with what we're already doing in QBS. So we're sort of feeling at this moment that the wisest course of action is really to sort of maintain our current sequence since we already are in compliance until we get a little bit more information regarding the proposed social studies MCAS. There's been some talk about an MCAS, the possibility of that, but there's really been very little sort of concrete, what's it going to be? Is it world history? Is it U.S. history? When that would be tested? Is it going to be 10th grade? The last time they talked about doing a MCAS was probably, had to be 10 years ago, and then, and they, you know, had a pilot, and we sort of changed the curriculum to be in line with what they were proposing at the time it was going to be at the end of 11th grade, and then it ended up that, that they never, you know, ended up having the test. So before we really make any significant changes, we want to just get a little bit more information in regards to if that MCAS is going to happen and what it will look like. So at, at that time, we can really sort of reassess to make sure that our program of studies is, is designed to best support our students to be successful on whatever standardized test that they'll have to take. The good news is that, so, that's fine. The good news is that we currently do cover all of the proposed recommended courses. In fact, we go above and beyond what DZ is proposing. The new frameworks outline three electives, and those are U.S. Government Politics, Economics, and Personal Financial Literacy. We currently offer all three of those: U.S. Government Politics, Economics, Personal Financial Literacy is offered in our Career Tech Department. In addition to those three, we have other opportunities for students to choose a course that might align with what they choose to pursue in college, or just maybe more personal choice: Law and Social Responsibility, European History, Sociology, Psychology, Colossi and Contemporary Issues are offered in addition to the DZ recommended electives. Also, in addition to those, we offer four advanced placement courses for 11th and 12th graders: AP U.S. History, AP European History, AP Government Politics, and AP Psychology. So these, the students have the opportunity to take a course at the AP level to get credit. And then also, we have three SEI courses for English learners: the EL Civics, EL U.S. History, and EL World History. So these are all over and above what is recommended by TC. In terms of course development, so Maddy talked about the, the different standards and the practice standards. So we're encouraged that these new performance standards included in the framework are already really closely aligned with the existing standards for Common Core, as well as the disciplinary practices for the new AP exams. So as such, we feel confident that when we're aligning our courses to teach the new framework, that will happen really quite naturally, because these are things that we're already doing. So on the slide, I know there's kind of a lot of words there, but what I did was I tried to put the proposed standards for History and Social Science Practice next to some of the Common Core standards for Literacy in History and Social Studies, along with the recommendations for the College Board. And if you look across, you see that there really is a tremendous amount of overlap, and they really sort of correlate. So the good news is, we are already, you know, since 2012, our score improvement plans have been designed to sort of shift and make sure that we're covering the Common Core. Also, since 2014, when the AP has been redesigned, we've been shifting to, to cover those things. So I feel really confident that we're in a good position, that we're poised to sort of meet the challenges of adopting the new framework.
Turn over to Joe. Thank you. The new middle school standards, really for 6th to 8th, there are really some suggested changes, especially in 8th grade. For 6th and 7th grade, what's now being suggested is a two-year course where both history and geography will be covered as regions, as opposed to now where it's covered 6th grade is geography and 7th grade is ancient civilizations. And 8th grade will be that newly mentioned civics course focusing on United States as well as Massachusetts, Southern African Government, really civics for students today. The way that geography is set up in 6th grade right now is to provide an understanding so that in 7th grade, they have the background information to understand sort of the world today. By looking at it the way it's newly being suggested with regions, there's an opportunity really to look at a region, to go back into its history and look at the geography of today, or you look at the geography and see where they've come from. I started LTU 6th grade Geography, and really there was a difficulty when students would want to get into that history, and you'd end up saying, oh, we have a lot to get through, or you'll find out next year, you know? So there's really a difficulty there, but the way that they do suggest it, they really leave it very open-ended in terms of how it can be covered. There are suggestions, and the language really suggests that there's a number of ways that it could be covered. They could continue to look at it the way it is today, because it is set up as a two-year course. So 6th and 7th grade would be taught within this two-year sequence, and it allows for the district to really talk to its teachers and its administrators and see what would work best within the district itself. I think what really gives it an opportunity is that they allow you to design humanities courses as well, and you can incorporate language arts. You can look at it really to, to build year to year, so that by the end of 7th grade, you could really get into ancient Greece and ancient Rome and build, build itself into what's going to be expected in 8th grade in terms of civics, especially dealing with how that history will be looked at. Currently, this is probably the biggest change to the frameworks. 8th grade right now is U.S. History 1, which really covers from the American Revolution to Reconstruction, and then it's, it's covered again in high school. So right now, there's a little bit of redundancy to the frameworks and how it's set up, but the new course would basically focus on civics, and really the language stood out to me is that it's going to inspire students to become informed citizens, focusing specifically on the works of democracy, how and why it develops, and the role of individuals in maintaining a healthy democracy. The new grade eight civics focuses on seven main topics: the foundation of U.S. political system, which really... which really builds its roots in sort of what you learn in some of that 7th grade course, as well as sort of just trying to look at the roots and ideas that developed for the American political system. The second one mentioned is the development of the United States government and how the framers really attempted to address the problem of how you balance power with the individual liberties and how people are able to maintain their freedoms. It then gets into the institution of the United States government as it's instituted today. A big part of the frameworks as to how it's drafted here talks about how the United States today, sort of where we are, is based in the history of it, obviously. Whereas the course as it is now, you teach the history and you're trying to connect it to the kids today. So they've sort of taken it and made it by focusing on that civics and on that government there, really pushing for the students to become well-informed. You can see that with the fourth one there, to become responsible citizens, and how the role of an individual is maintained in a healthy democracy. There still would be some history involved in this, especially in number five, as you get into the Constitution and the amendments as they exist. But there's a lot of Supreme Court cases that are mentioned to really do standards. It really gives an opportunity for the students to understand sort of their own rights. The newest thing, and I'll have to, maybe I'll depend on you guys, I'll come back and ask you a little about local governments. But the structure of Massachusetts and local governments is a big part of this as well. Really just trying to focus on how local and Massachusetts government is incorporating, how it works with the United States government. And then finally, the last one, this one, I'm excited to teach this, the freedom of press, and really the role there, how a free press supports a democratic government. So that's just something that sort of gives you an opportunity to really look with the students with a focus on the same thing. They mentioned that you have an opportunity to teach it many different ways, and you can make your own, and you can go into that. There's suggestions about using current events, using historical debates, and being able to really go in-depth of different court cases in different ways that sort of arrived where we are. And I think they also mentioned that middle school and high school, there'll be a responsibility to make sure that you work together so that we can align this 8th grade civics and so that it doesn't overlap with a lot of that US history 1.
Thanks, Jo. So I'm here representing the elementary schools. I'm a 5th grade teacher at Point Webster, and I teach various subjects. So something that's really cool for me to see is kind of how the standards are very similar to what we're using and how we can incorporate them into various subjects, like language arts that I do with the kids. And I think something that's really neat is a lot of the other trainings that elementary teachers are having right now for things such as language arts. A lot of those resources that the district is buying for us are going to be easily incorporated into what we're learning. For example, the 3rd grade frameworks, if we look at those. It talks about the history of Massachusetts, starting at the time of the pilgrims. A big milestone for a lot of the 3rd grade classes is the guys get to go to Plymouth Plantation. They remember it, they talk about it all the way through. And then grade 4, they talk about the study of the people and the geography of the United States, Mexico, and Canada. And a lot of that is going to stay the same if you look up there. One thing as a teacher that I really appreciated in the grade 3 in the standards, they talked about how the students are going to start learning the history of their own town and then get bigger from there. And they really talked about the importance of using primary sources. And I know upper elementary teachers and high school teachers and middle school teachers will really appreciate that. That's a skill that's very hard for kids, and the sooner that you get to them with that information, the sooner they're able to depict important words and comprehend information that will really affect them across different subjects. Same with grade 4, very similar: United States, Mexico, and Canada. And they kind of adopt some of the 5th grade material, which is good news for us because it's less that we need to cover. And a lot of math reading skills incorporation into both of those 3rd grades, both of those grades. Grade 5, grade 5 had everything from early ancient civilizations all the way through the formation of our own democratic government, which is a lot of information. So they really cut down on the length of the content, kind of the time periods. So now 5th grade teachers are really able to dive into the depth of what we're teaching, which is really exciting. And they still kind of leave that freedom up to us of how we want to inspire our students, which is really exciting. Now, the 5th grade content really starts at early colonial colonies into the American Revolution and how we kind of created our own democratic government into the civil rights movement, which is a really awesome opportunity for students to have really important conversations that are very pertinent to our society nowadays. If you see here, I left the book in my purse next door. But again, with grades 3, grade 4, they have familiar standards. But this book right here, it's at the time of American Revolution, and you guys may have heard of other meetings. But currently, elementary teachers are getting training by Nancy Boils on small group reading instruction and close reading, which has been super beneficial. And now we're really going to start to see the payoff in other subjects. This is an example of one of the Nancy Boyle books that we're using in the 5th grade, and it's perfect. It has to go along with the American Revolution. And Nancy has been aware of those changes that are going on with the frameworks, and she's done a really great job at allowing us to kind of talk about what can we use with the materials that she's providing for us. And then the Journeys, Holton Mifflin Program that we already have, that actually has a lot of resources that aid to the American Revolution. Something that I know a lot of other elementary teachers are going to really appreciate, and I know Erin will talk about more, is the ability to kind of point out cross-curricular connections. They do it between math, they do it between science reading, which is always important because social studies is one of those things that unfortunately is not tested. So sometimes you need to kind of figure out a time uniquely to kind of get it into your curriculum, and that's an awesome example. So I know personally, yesterday I actually just did, there's another book. It's about the primary sources in United States history. And I did it with my kids, and we were learning about words such as coral, anarchy, violation, inhabitants, when we were talking about the Boston Tea Party and the Boston Massacre. And we were looking at those primary sources. And that would be really hard for our kids in the 5th grade to access. And using this resource that we've had training for our language arts groups has really been a great way to incorporate it and get the kids at that next level that I think Quincy does a really good job at.
Thank you, Becca. So in grades pre-K to 2, there are actually many similarities to the old standards. However, as Becca mentioned when she was talking, they are definitely much more explicit and detailed than the previous version. So for instance, in pre-K, students under the previous standards were introduced to the concepts of history and social science through activities like learning about their family, school, and community. With the new standards, they are still focused on the student's community, but they're digging much deeper into more specific supporting questions, such as why do people work? Children will be prompted to draw on personal experiences, literature, and informational texts to explore this question. In grade 2, in the previous standards, children were introduced to United States history, geography, economics, and government. The new standards in grades 2 are a little bit different and focus on global geography, exploring different places, peoples, cultures, and resources. Although they are different, there is still a community component to the standard. And I think it's really nice to hear that this community theme drives all the way through up through high school, which we heard in that presentation. And the children will discuss and learn about why different people settle in our community. So a nice component of the new standards is that they build on the knowledge and skills from the previous grade. Included on the introductory page, there is a section in each grade level, Maddie talked about it earlier, called "Looking Back and Looking Ahead." This identifies for the teachers what was previously covered in the grade below and what will be covered in the grade above. In addition, the children starting in pre-K will be introduced to ideas from four major fields of social studies: civics, geography, history, and economics. The children study these areas by exploring guiding questions, as Maddie mentioned earlier. And I have just some examples at different grade levels of the guiding questions on the slide. So for instance, at the pre-K level, I used a civics example at the pre-K level. And so a guiding question that would be posed would be, what are their rules and why do we need them? And although this may sound complex for pre-K, they do this by learning about the rules of their classroom, the school, and the community. So definitely geared to their level. And in a kindergarten example, I took a geography kindergarten example. So the question being, how do maps, globes, and photographs show different things about a place? And so something that they might be asked to do is describe the location of people, objects, and places using correct terminology like "up," "in front of," "near," "next to," "beside," "on," words like that, to describe things that they're seeing in their community. And then for history, I chose a grade 1 example. And I really liked this example. What does the term "out of many one" mean? And why is it the model of the United States? And so some ways that they make sure their understanding of this is to explore how people show pride in belonging to the United States and recognizing and explaining the meaning of unifying symbols, phrases, and songs. And then the last example is economics, and it's a grade 2 example. And the guiding question would be, how do resources in an area affect its industries and jobs? And so something that they might do is explain the relationship between natural resources and industries and their community and jobs in a particular location. Just some examples there. Another nice feature of the new standards, and I actually really enjoy seeing this as I was, you know, reviewing them and working on them, is the link that they make to the standards in other areas. So Becca actually just mentioned this. So for instance, the Massachusetts Language Arts and Literacy frameworks are incorporated throughout the new standards so the children build strong literacy skills across the curriculum. In addition, especially at the younger levels, there are also links to other standards, like the mathematics standards. And you see here my example that I took, which is the social-emotional standards for pre-K and K, which I just really thought was an excellent example and had to share with you. So you can see here that this is taken right from the standards and that clarification statement that Maddie mentioned earlier, it explains that those three standards directly reflect standards 6 through 11 in the standards for social-emotional learning for pre-K and K. So really, nice connections and blending of our curriculum frameworks are within these standards.
Okay, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about next steps with professional development for middle and high school. The next steps for professional development are during the 2018-19 school year, we will begin to unpack the standards during our high school department meetings and site-based or system-wide professional development at the middle school level. The summer design team will create and roll out a guidance document and a presentation that can be used across the system. Vertical Team 8-9 meetings will take a very in-depth look at the major vertical shifts in the social studies content and discuss next steps. Middle school teams will design and implement an interdisciplinary unit to pilot in the spring of 2019. And this unit design will include English and reading teachers. High school departments will also discuss additional shifts within high school curriculum and how to weave in guiding principles and applied practice into daily instruction. And eventually, we will, once we know a little bit more about these social studies assessment, we will be looking carefully at how that affects our course rollout.
So you heard Becca actually talk a little bit about some of the things that we're already doing in terms of professional development at the elementary level. We're so fortunate that we've been working with Dr. Boils for the past two years now. And this year, grades 3 to 5, as Becca said, have been working on small group instruction. And it just so happens that her materials are actually directly aligned to these new curriculum frameworks. And so I put a couple of different examples in the pictures here because I obviously knew what Becca was going to be sharing with you. So just an example, one of them, Becca actually talked about today, was investigating primary sources from American history. And just another example of a text that they would be using in their small group instruction and are using actually currently is people from America's past. So really great, brand-new materials, hot off the presses, that all of our 3 to 5 teachers already have. So we are just very fortunate that that worked out and that those are directly aligned. So already work that they're currently doing. And you know, something that we'll be doing in the future obviously is unpacking the standards during system-wide and site-based professional development time. We also, next year, are planning to have a vertical team from 5 to 6, especially because grade 5 does have some significant changes. So just making sure that the 6th grade teachers are aware of that and that we're working together to make sure we're covering everything we need to cover and we're aligned and on the same page. So we'll be discussing the shifts in the content. And then the curriculum teams, next year, will begin to work on updating curriculum maps and interdisciplinary units. And the same thing in pre-K to 2. And they will unpack the standards during the system-wide and site-based professional development, and then also begin to work on updating their curriculum maps and interdisciplinary units.
So in anticipation of a vote to adopt the new revised history and social science frameworks in June, we're already looking at the big picture, which is district planning and implementation. So this, the revision, the review panel has been underway for a few years at the state level. But starting in January, information started coming out fast and furious in advance of the public comment. So when that happens, our department chairs, our teachers, our administrators, they start to get the word through memos, meetings, just conversations among the social studies team. So we wanted to make sure that we were anticipating some of their questions. So for year 1, we propose that we make no changes to our grade-level social studies curriculum or course syllabi at the high school until we can inform our staff at large of the changes and allow them team time to unpack the new framework and revise supporting curriculum and assessment resources. Maybe even in year 1, they won't do so much revising or rewriting, but instead, they'll be unpacking and making correlations of what stays in place and where some of the new shifts occur and whether that, how much of a big change that actually requires. In year 1, which is the 2018-19 school year, directors and department chairs will conduct a needs assessment with teams to prioritize PD needs for the following school year. Directors and department chairs will convene a summer team, as Beth described it, as a design team. And our job will be to come together as a whole district, K to 12, with some representatives, to review and align the changes, explore some pre-made units and assessments that are already out there, and of course, create a system-wide guidance document that every school at every level can use in the fall with either their full staff or with their social studies focus teachers. In the spring of 2019, the design team will work with the superintendent and business director to outline the budget impact related to PD and material needs, if there are any. For the summer of 2019, we will provide professional development workshops for staff to explore any new topics that have come up in their grade or course with the new framework. We'll reconvene curriculum mapping groups to finalize revisions to internal curriculum documents. And then in year 2, which is the 2019-2020 school year, full implementation will begin. We'll continue with PD, content-focused workshops for staff. We'll continue to work, we'll build a stronger partnership with the literacy and ELA teachers that Erin mentioned to create opportunities for related reading and discussions. There's that cross-curriculum. We'll provide instructional support for teaching strategies and resources. We'll keep a minimal focus on a state assessment, and we'll stay focused on our own internal high-quality summative and formative assessments until we hear from more information from the state. Because right now, the answer to that question is, will there be a state assessment? The answer is, there's no discussion at the moment. That's the word we get back at the districts. We will continue to update the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee on this transition to a new history/social science framework. And I'm so proud and it's such a pleasure to work with not only directors and SLT members, but actual social studies teachers and department chairs from the field. So they are here to entertain any questions you might have for a particular level. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for your time. So first of all, excellent presentation. Looks like we're ahead of the curve in theories. Is the... Does the state, I was curious about your question about assessments, do they prescribe, and I'm new, so forgive me, do they prescribe curriculum frameworks and then say, you need to implement this over a period of time, and then they may or may not come out and do assessments or audits or whatever? How does that all work?
As we know, they have been very focused on ELA math and science, and that has been for a number of years. Danielle referenced a pilot history/social science assessment that they tried. So when I'm talking about the state assessment, I'm talking about a next-generation MCAS. That's what I mean by the state assessment. That's the only prescription, prescribed assessment.
For the students.
For the students in that content area.
Does the state evaluate districts in terms of the implementation here or not? Or they just say, this is the framework, and carry it on? Is that how it works?
They provide us with the framework, and it's our guidance document then to provide the best, highest-quality curriculum lessons and units that we can. And so we rely on the teacher's expertise as well as related resources that we can provide the teachers to implement their lesson. Did that answer your question?
I think so. So I think you're saying, if and when there's an assessment, the only assessment is if they do an MCAS, then we can measure whether or not...
That's for the state to measure us. In the meantime, those grades that you see on your child's report cards, those are reflective of internal assessments.
Understood.
That are either teacher-designed, or they come directly from purchased materials for that curriculum area.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew.
First, I want to say thank you so much for the presentation showing the 2003 standards and the two new proposed standards and where we stacked up. I really do appreciate it. So aside from the potential assessment given by the state, I've also seen some language requiring that students could need to complete two civics projects throughout their time in public school in order to graduate. I've seen maybe a fifth-grade assessment, eighth grade, and eleventh grade. Again, they don't need two of those three. I was just wondering if we do any sort of capstone projects at the end of the year right now that would potentially, I guess, fulfill that requirement? I know that Lehman Public Schools does have a capstone project, an elective capstone for their electives at the high school level that do include civics and extreme courses. I'm just curious if at any grade level, we do something similar regarding, I guess, history.
In our, well, in addition to, of course, the community service requirement, our US government elective, they do several community service projects, or needed service projects at the beginning of the school year. They do one where they put together homeless bags, so that they work with, I think that agency is called Cope, and it's an agency that helps the homeless, they put together soap and things that are needed. They do, we just did one last week, that was a breakfast for seniors, so senior citizens came, and the senior government classes put on a presentation, and they came and they raised money to have breakfast for them, and they did raffles, and they had some student performances. In a couple of weeks, they'll be doing one that's targeted at first responders, so it's like a thank you for fire, police. Those are the three I can think of. I think there might be one more. So those are coordinated projects that the government classes work on together.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
At Quincy High School, we don't have, again, it's sort of a different class, different things. What we just did was the Use and Battle Program with the Sheriff's Department, where a number of students interviewed veterans, and then they had a presentation at the luncheon that they had, and everyone was very excited about that. So it's got to be a cross-generational oral history from the veterans and just do that. So that's just one off the top of my head.
Thank you all so much for your work. Appreciate it.
Nicole.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the work you do. I know we continue to get push and push and push from the state folks that know all the answers. I just want to tell a story and then go back to it. When I was at Long Quincy High School, just a few years ago, not as many as Quincy had to do. But I remember, it was twelfth grade, I don't think the class was political science and our government, but Brice Mayder was my teacher. Some of you remember Brice Mayder very accurately, but she was a teacher at the time, and then we hit prep two and a half, and a lot of those teachers, a lot of the undergrad teachers. So her plan was to have a debate held at the Long Island Hospital, and it was the election year for the Reagan-Carter John Anderson election. So she looked for volunteers, and of course, I volunteered, and I wanted to do Ronald Reagan. So I was chosen, but I was assigned to be Carter. And I always remember that from Brice Mayder, because even though, Condonor, many years later, is a very strong liberal, she didn't let her bias in the classroom come across in the one-two, and she challenged us to look at the other side. Now, I say that because I've heard some things, particularly in the last election, but sometimes a teacher's personal opinion, I think, is a little too much. We're teaching our kids, we should be teaching, it's not always two sides, as many sides as that may be to an issue. I don't want to hear that it's a teacher's personal opinion in a political matter at all. I think there ought to be challenges, and the kids look at all sides, critical thinking, that's what we do. And so that, you know, when I see the professional development and talk about these things, you know, I hope we reinforce that with teachers. I love our teachers, and I think we all do a great job. But there's that temptation. And what we're living now in the political discourse of, lack of discourse today, I think it's even more important to teach that to our youngsters. The second comment I want to make is, following the history stuff, and you mentioned redundant, was redundant. You could teach it every year, my God, you know, some of this history, you talk to young adults today, and they don't know it at all. Is there that twist on what Quincy has contributed to U.S. history, and at what levels, and can we, you know, uncover that a little bit more? These kids grow up to be citizens and ambassadors for our city, and so much of the history started right here. And I don't know what kind of a program we do for that. So just a couple of comments, if somebody wants to address it, feel free.
Definitely in the grade-three standards that I talked about, I think that they might be able to speak more about the middle school and high school setting, but definitely in that grade-three setting, but they're so receptive to that information, that's when they start with the idea of history within their city of Quincy, and then they really move outside of the big picture into Massachusetts, and then Massachusetts as a part of New England. So I think that's when it's first introduced, in grade three, and then, I'm sure it's revisited in the other subjects, but I know that specifically speaking, as kind of soon as their ears, and hopefully as they can remember, they'll hear it in grade three, so.
Actually, in the new standards, the community instruction starts like right at the pre-K level, so they're talking about, you know, the different things that have happened in your community and how your community contributes to, you know, the nation as a whole, because there's a large focus on that. And then, as Becca said, it does still remain in grade three, and they do still do, you know, the Grand Railway, the Adams Houses, the Adams Mansion, the Historic Society comes in. So they do still have, you know, that whole program, and that will continue, you know, even if it was dangerous.
Mr. Lloyd.
I just want to go off of that as well. We actually, in the eighth grade, which right now is U.S. history, we did some professional development the last couple of years, working with Quincy Historical Society and Quincy's role during the Civil War. So much of it's obviously with the American Revolution, and we do a lot of work with the Adamses and John Quincy Adams's role, especially leading into the events as one of the first politicians to speak out against slavery after his presidency, when he started announcing representatives. And that was something that we did focus on, because that's sort of a little piece of Quincy history, local history, that gets a little bit lost. My students also have gone to the Adams House of Penns Hill, talk about sort of the story that John Quincy Adams tells about being able to see the Battle of Buckingham while his father's off in Philadelphia. And so a lot of that local history right now is, we do cover in eighth grade as well, and we go with civics, but we ought to build it. We'll get that now.
Mr. Lloyd.
I wanted to start by just saying how pleased I am that we're so on top of this. I've been involved in discussions about this at the State Student Advisory Council since the beginning of the year. I have read this document cover to cover. I don't recommend it, but you can if you want to. And we've been discussing up there, and they've been very good also about having student input in the curriculum in general. But I had a couple of just specific local questions when it comes to this. And I'll start. At the beginning of the document, they basically say that the heart of the whole reordered curriculum, the new frameworks, is democracy, and of the study of democracy, and is incorporating democracy and then also civic engagement into basically every classroom. I was just wondering how different, or if that's different than what's currently being taught, or if things will need to be adapted in order to make democracy more central to each of the courses? I don't know if this...
I think that's a perfect curriculum office question. So that is, that, this new vision that they have is new, and this will be part of the unpacking. So tonight, we have the levels represented, elementary, middle, high school, but what that conversation needs is a teacher from every single grade level. So we are aware of that, that that is a major shift in the new frameworks, and so that will be, the eighth-grade civics will not just be the only shift, it'll be how the civics is a common thread throughout, starting in the primary grades. Does that answer that question?
That does answer that question, yeah. Continuing with the eighth-grade civics, I know it gives a lot of freedom. You mentioned the seven different standards and how it gives a lot of freedom to the districts to decide in what order they focus on that. Will that be also up to the individual teacher to decide when they do different units? Does my concern there would be, just for continuity, if someone transfers between schools or between grade levels, that they don't do the same? I've been three months to that, three months to think about it.
I don't want to speak for all the eighth-grade teachers, but I think that's an excellent point, that right now, I know I begin my school year doing citizenship, and then we get into the, really, the order of history, whereas even my coworker, the other eighth-grade social studies teacher, she begins the Constitution. So our students are covering things at different times, it's just the way that we have sort of implemented that for ourselves. I know that there's a lot of eighth-grade social studies teachers right now who, they view themselves as history teachers, so they may want to, they may have more of a focus on sort of the roots in a lot of these court cases, or they may focus a lot more on, you know, the development of the Constitution, want to go more into the history. I mean, but that is something they would have to discuss, and I think just give us an opportunity, and that really the language provides that the teachers will have a chance, middle school along with high school, to create the curriculum for themselves. I think the, even though it's as thick as you point out right there, I think they leave a lot of responsibility to the district and the teachers, and I think they give us a lot of trust, and I think that's something that we like to have.
Just one more.
The next one had to do with the electives. I know they recommend three different electives. They recommend the government and politics, the financial literacy, and the economics. And I know that financial literacy currently is in, is in the career and tech, and it goes towards credits for a career in tech. Is there any discussion about moving that towards the history, to go towards history graduation requirements, or to go towards being part of the history curriculum instead, or is that planning on just keeping it in career tech?
So we talked a little bit about that. There was a possibility that maybe a teacher, because you can teach one course outside of your license, you could, the teacher could maybe be able to allow students to take that course for history credit, even though they were a member of the career tech department. So that was one option that we discussed. And again, very preliminary, because this is, these are sort of brand-new, we've just sort of thought of what these are, but that was one suggestion.
And I have one more, you might want to say that. About the economics elective, I know that it's offered at both the honors and the AP levels at Quincy High School, and that it's not offered at North Quincy. Will this change that? Will this influence maybe introducing an economics elective at North Quincy High School? I know they do it at Quincy High School, and it seems to, I don't know much about it, it seems to be succeeding there. I don't know if there's been discussion about adding that at North Quincy.
So not yet. Yeah, not at that point yet. Definitely, that would be something to consider as we, you know, begin the work of unpacking the standards and thinking how we're going to adapt to some of these new recommendations. That would definitely be something that would be on the table, that discussion.
Yeah, well, we talked a lot about vertical coherence, but we're going to take advantage of any additional time also horizontally. So that's the two high schools together talking about the shifts, the grade-level teachers as well as the middle school system. We're going to take advantage of this opportunity to be creative and be innovative, you know, the department's encouraging that. We haven't really seen that in the prior frameworks, but we'll be as cohesive as possible, keeping in mind that our own students do move internally. And so we'd like them to, if they move into a new school, be right on pace with where they left their former middle school.
One last one. Be here all night. Final one, just to go off of Miss Gatchell's question about the assessments. Are we moving forward now? Are we assuming that there won't be an MCAS? Do we have kind of a Plan A, Plan B? This is what we do if we have an MCAS? This is have a shift if we don't? This is what we'll do?
We talked about that, didn't we? Would you like to, either of you like to take a stab at that?
Sure. We had a preliminary conversation about it.
So our conversation was that in the moment, because we have really no clear guidance that we're going to sort of stay the course and continue to do what we do, the minute that we, you know, have some better indication from the Department of Ed of what's coming, then that's when we would sort of take action and decide whether or not we need to rearrange our course sequence to make sure that the students are prepared for whatever assessment that comes down the line.
I think, like, reinforce that. I think we have all the content covered, it's just a matter of what if a grade level that potential test might be, you would maybe have to reorganize, but right now, all of our courses are well-designed and fit the content that they're asking for right now. So that's not a change.
Mrs. Hooley.
Thank you. On that, if they were to institute a new MCAS for this, how much lead time do you anticipate that we would get on the student form parents that it was coming?
They are being so mum on this right now, because they know this could potentially impact course scheduling at high school levels. So there is no information. I don't even have an indication. I think they'd like to do it, but that's all we know. We will give you as much information as always possible.
I have a couple of questions. Going back to the sequence, the current sequence and the recommended sequence and the electors, the course that we teach now in grade twelve, the post-World War II, is that a required course? All seniors take that course? Post-World War II?
All seniors who are not taking AP course take that course. If they take an AP class senior year, they don't take post-World War II.
And the electors giving cover for that? If they want to take psychology, they're...
Well, in post-World War II, in Quincy High School, it's a half-year, and then they match up with another half-year.
So there is opportunities. One of my concerns about the frameworks, the new frameworks, I think the social studies departments have traditionally, are some of the richest electors, and the kids love them at the high school, and they really love them, and I hate to see us get to a point where kids would have to add another social studies course on, where they might be a career in tech major, and you just can't squeeze all these things into their schedule with all these requirements. So I'm pleased that that's just a semesterized course, and there is some, so, please, really. My other question is, when I read the frameworks, the recommendation for the U.S. history in grade nine and ten, well, excuse me, while you're there, I just wanted to ask you a question before you...
Sure.
You've been teaching U.S. history in a year and a half for a long time. Have you been able to cover the content in a year and a half?
Well, every year, the content grows, as you know. But yes, I mean, every year, it's a challenge, but certainly, you know, twenty years ago, right now, many teachers were up World War II. Right now, they're actually doing like the seventies and eighties as history, so they can get in the next two months up to the history of the nineties. Serious, I'm not kidding.
So anyway, when I was...
So yes, it's a challenge, but that's what we...
What you've been doing in the year and a half.
Yes.
So my other question is, when I was reading the frameworks, one of the recommendations for U.S. history in grades nine and ten, and I'm glad you're not changing it now, because I hate jumping through hoops before they really know what they're doing, but I think the challenge, one of the things is, they thought that the civics class would be a great segue... would be a great segue into U.S. history. If we're going to ultimately hold off on U.S. history until grade 11 and 12, it seems to me like there'd be less, no word, coherence? So just when you're thinking about that, that might be, I, it's a valid point in here. It seemed valid to me, so it may or may not be valid. My last thing, when I was reading this framework, was, this is very interesting. In the old frameworks, the word Native Americans appeared once in the document, once. And I think it was in the reference section. And when I did a search of the new frameworks, Native people occurs 42 times. And so to the mayor's question, there is a time in there that you can and should be doing about local government, maybe talk about all of these things and refer them back to your own community. So it's not just Native people in general, it's our Native people. People who were settled in Massachusetts in our communities. And it's, I think that that's an incredible, incredible step. So I think in our community, we have some educating to do around that topic. So it's great that it's going to be built into the frameworks for our elementary kids to be able to really stop looking at. So I think that's a great thing. I want to thank you all for your presentation. I did comment on the frameworks, so. But anyway.
Our, thank you as well, you know, a long evening, you know, later in the agenda. But I think that we're very, very fortunate and, you know, I comment to Allison, I've talked so many times, that we are so lucky with the professionals that we have because you have this insatiable thirst to make sure our kids get what they need to get to, to go to the next level. So we are fortunate and whether it's the leadership, expertise, we're just very, very lucky to have such great teachers in the department. So I want to thank you very, very much, and SLT as well. But I want to thank you very much for your time and everything you do. Thank you, Maggie.
I have one other comment, just to reiterate what Dr. Christopher just said. The number of plates that you guys have spent is incredible. And the coordination that you handle with the superintendent's leadership team and the stuff that's going on, I mean, this is incredible. But we've had these kind of presentations about all the core content areas and beyond. You know, social and emotional learning. So I just want to say how much I appreciate, and I think I speak for my colleagues, and what the SLT is doing under your leadership.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is school choice, Dr. Christopher.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that the Quincy School Committee was brought from the enrolling in non-resident students in the Quincy Public Schools for 2018 through 2019 academic school year for the following reasons. Continued concerns at the elementary, middle, and high school based on current and projected enrollment, as well as policy of the Quincy School Committee that we appear to classify as bad.
Did we have a vote?
Go ahead. Mr. Andronico.
Yes.
Mr. Rigoli is absent. Mr. Demichus.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
And Mary Cog.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the social educational collaborative representative, Dr. Christopher.
If you could nominate a representative to be our representative to the social or educational collaborative, that would be a good thing. Done it for many years.
Who's the superintendent?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? The ayes have it. Out of state travel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That is the North Quincy High one. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second one is the out-of-state travel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In-state travel, would you guys?
Aye.
That was stated. Under additional business, does anybody have any additional business?
I do have one issue. I didn't know if it would be best to come at the athletic committee or now. And since there's no mechanism before the writing and it couldn't be reasonably anticipated, I was just looking for an update at a future, maybe athletic committee meeting relative to Bishop Field. Bishop Field has a number of parents around the baseball. It's only one or two large diamonds. I think we've lost three or four in the last 20 years in the city. It serves North Quincy High varsity, junior varsity freshmen, a bunch of youth teams. There are a number of safety issues. I know that some of the coaches and parents have brought to the attention of the Park Department three months back. Just find that the status, I know the parents have invested $27,000 in coaches and a lot of the upgrades there and they're looking for other. So just looking for an update on Bishop Field and the subsequent meeting we could do.
If I could, the school committee has a representative on the pocket recreation board. So I would suggest maybe talk to Mr. Rigoli and convey that and maybe he can shed some light on.
Okay, also under additional business, I'd like to make a motion that we put the North Quincy High School mascot into the teaching and learning subcommittee. We've recently had an impassioned presentation by Dr. Kuvian. We've heard from our citywide representatives and more importantly, citywide held a meeting on this topic in March. I believe there are about 60 people there representing 11 of our schools. I have read the minutes from that meeting and the comments from the attendees and I've also heard from several people myself. People on both sides of this issue feel that it is a true chance for us to educate ourselves and our community. I've also done some outside reading on my own and there are several communities that have resolved this question for the continuation of the mascot, once it was better described and people understood the significance. In light of the significant changes in the social studies frameworks, now including lots of information on Native peoples, it's a perfect tough enclose to address this. And I'd love to work with the superintendent and his team to see if we can find a way to have the conversation. So that's, I'm making a motion to put them into teaching.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is communication. Upcoming school committee meetings, May 2nd and June 13th at the Coddington Building. And the May 16th meeting will be at Central Middle School. We'll also start at 6th grade. Upcoming subcommittee meetings, Wednesdays at the Coddington Building, quarterly budget and finance, April 25th, teaching and learning, April 25th, and FY budget, May 9th at 6th grade. Reports of subcommittees, facilities, transportation, security. Mr. Demichus to report on March 14th meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had our first facilities, transportation, and security subcommittee on Wednesday, March 14th. We had a presentation from the Public Buildings Commission of Paul Heinz for an update in regards to some of the tests that are being done, that were done in the fall of 2016 regarding to the lead and copper that were detected in, the tests that were done in fall of 2016, excuse me. Dr. Christopher shared an analysis of the statistics reported by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of incidents resulting in disciplinary action for the school years 2012 to 2013 through 2016 through 2017. Mrs. Hubley asked for clarification that there have been no guns on school grounds. And Dr. Christopher said that there have been none in his 17-year tenure superintendent. Dr. Christopher then discussed the research he performed at the school committee's request on metal detectors as part of the school's security. Mrs. Hubley then asked if the districts who use metal detectors use all of them at all of the levels. Dr. Christopher said that the majority are all used at high schools. Mrs. Lebo then asked if the research showed that schools may have discontinued using them after adopting them due to the time factor involved. Mr. Rigoli then brought up the discussion about the costs and Mr. Christopher reassured the committee that he would do some research about that. So we look forward to hearing more about that. Mr. Rigoli anticipates that the public response to searches on school grounds would be positive. Mr. Rigoli is concerned also that the openness of athletic events, referees, students, and staff from out of town. Mrs. Hubley asked towards the end of the meeting for survey of best security practices for other gateway cities and adjacent cities and towns. Mr. Gatto said that Quincy is a mid-sized city and would not want to see us use big city solutions for mid-city problems. Mrs. Lebo asked if we need to have a separate policy for vaping. Mrs. Papil then responded, said that it is covered over the existing substantive use policies. And we then ended the meeting and add that. All these minutes are available to the public online. If there are no other comments or any changes.
No edits? Okay, that's good. Athletic and wellness, Mr. Gatto to report?
We did, we had a meeting, Madam Chair, on March 14th. It was an overview of the winter athletics. Both of the athletic directors, I need to go through the details. I think it'll be posted on the website. And excellent review from Ms. Owens on it. There were a couple of to do's that were left with the superintendent, I think, and the athletic directors to get back to the committee relative to, I think, the classification of sailing crew gymnastics chair leading, whether or not they could be considered sports. But we'll take that up at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. Any edits to that? Seeing then, the minutes are online. The teaching and learning subcommittee met on March 28th. We had a presentation first by Ms. Roy on the update on Girls Rising Initiative. The goal of that initiative is inclusiveness, focus on goal-setting accomplishments, and develop leadership skills with a STEM focus. She highlighted some examples of what's going on in our elementary and middle schools. She then confirmed that all high men's schools will be participating in Girls Rising this spring and they're all at various levels, I mean, various types of content in the eighth grade. This is going to happen after the MCAT assessment. They're going to be able to put that into their classes. She then presented an update on the Advanced Scaffolding Initiative, middle and high school, continuing to collaborate on scaffolding and construction. A new placement assessment for grade eight students was implemented for science. Ms. Roy, Ms. Perkins, and Ms. Smith then presented to us on the Department of Elementary Education's digital literacy and computer science frameworks. Standards are fairly complex. She reviewed the elementary grades, Ms. Perkins reviewed the elementary grades, the online responsibility of intimate safety, online assessments, most work in keyboarding. Middle schools are building on the elementary skills and also learning to create, modify, manipulate data and break and analyze algorithms and basic programs. Mr. Gatto asked where all these standards are taught. And Ms. Roy said that is what we're expecting to be accomplished. The frameworks are fairly new and we haven't, we haven't actually implemented them across the board yet. Mr. Smith reviewed the Project Lead the Way that has been at Quincy High School for a number of years and is moving into North Quincy High School because of the grade that they brought after grade four. And also, Project Lead the Way will be moving into grades six through eight. This will be changing all of our secret secret courses in the technology department at the middle schools. Team of middle and high school teachers are looking to map the rear and how students are exposed to the digital literacy frameworks, the ones that Mr. Gatto was specifically speaking about. He asked, Mr. Gatto asked for the frameworks released. They were dated 2016, the school system was not released to us until January 2018. And Mr. Gatto made a motion to consider the appropriate grade level for introducing keyboarding and the uniform technology curriculum for our schools. That motion was seconded and I believe we brought that to teaching. I'm not sure. But the meeting ended with that, we will bring it to teaching. Any edits? Policy, Mr. Rigoli is not here, but Mrs. Hubley has agreed to read the report.
On Thursday, April 5th, there was a meeting of the policy subcommittee and Mr. Rigoli chaired open the meeting. At this meeting, we discussed Section 2 and Section 5 of the policy book. In Section 2, we discussed Sections 2.3, 2.3.2, the school committee superintendent relationship, as well as 2.4.11, with much discussion. Those minutes are online and full at quincypublicschools.com. So you can read the full minutes there. Through Mr. Rigoli, Mr. Gatto asked for Sections 2.2.1, School Committee Powers and Duties, 2.2.2, School Committee Member Authority, 2.4.3, School Committee Meeting Procedures, 2.4.4, Notifications of School Committee Meetings, 2.4.5, Agenda Format, and 2.4.6, Agenda Preparations to be Held for Further Discussions, since he was unable to make the meeting. Myself and Mr. Andronico voted yes to honor his request. So we'll have that in a further meeting. And Section 4.11, Containing Revised Open Forum Language, was moved to this meeting as discussed and will also appear on the May 2nd School Committee Agenda Meeting for eligible for voting on. For Section 5, we discussed 5.5.5, which is the bus driver examinations and training. And as I stated, these minutes are online and full of discussion. Thank you.
Any edits? Seeing no edits, they can stand, but I just want to thank Ms. Owens for capturing what went on at that meeting because it was, we were all over the place. We were all over the place. And the minutes are great because I sort of knew we went after that. So thank you very much. Next item on the, next item on the agenda is executive session, seeing none. I will move to adjournment if I have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.